Welcome to this joint special city council and finance advisory board meeting this Tuesday, May 27. So, excuse me just one moment because I forgot my glasses and I can't see a thing. No, I have some, I just have to grab them, okay. We will begin this meeting, excuse me, with the land acknowledgement. The island or the land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jirojigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And with public comment this evening pursuant to the Brown Act, section 54954, the public shall be provided an opportunity to speak only on the items that are listed on the special meeting agenda. Public comment will be taken following the presentation of the special agenda item. Pursuant to city resolution 2011-22, city council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. And forgive me, I didn't even welcome you. Welcome, we're glad you're all here. Thanks for being here. And with that, we'll turn it over to Director Millar.
Mayor, I'll do a roll call. Thank you. Mayor Bergel. Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Maldon.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Finance member Carol Mays. James Clor.
Here.
Dave Paris.
Present.
Thank you.
And to you, Director Millar.
Good evening. So, this is the first study session for the fiscal year 2526 proposed budget. This year, we decided to do a joint meeting with the city council and the finance advisory committee. We've also invited the departments to come and speak on behalf of their budget. They're here to answer any questions. It doesn't have to be related to their budget, just FYI. So, tonight's presentation is really a big picture overview of the fiscal year 2526 budget. We're gonna look at the general fund in a little more detail than our other major funds. We're gonna look at revenues. Okay.
I apologize.
On Zoom?
Yeah.
Our apologies to Zoom. We're ready to go now. We'll restart. Thank you.
So, tonight's presentation is on the fiscal year 2526 proposed budget. We'll begin by looking at general fund revenues, followed by expenditures. And then the third section, we'll look at departmental budgets, including position changes and division budgets. So, starting with section one, general fund revenues. So, the makeup of the general fund is represented on that pie chart. The majority of general fund revenues come from one source, and there's really two other material sources. That includes taxes, intergovernmental revenues, and charges for services. So, we'll begin at the bottom line. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll start at the top, taxes. So, this is by far the largest category of revenues in the general fund. Overall, we're expecting very little growth in this category. By packaging everything together, you somewhat hide some of the different trends we're seeing with these different tax revenues. If you notice, our sales tax is projected to go down next fiscal year from where we began in 2425. But property tax is showing a fairly large jump. This is the combination of assessed values going up, as well as more monies coming from the successor agency as those debts are getting paid off. Just to remind everybody what's happening with sales tax. With Measure H, we saw a large increase in fiscal year 2122 when the, when that began, the first year of Measure H dollars. Since then, or I'm sorry, I just want to point out this little red bar. The top of that 2425 bar is where we started the year, what we estimated to be, what to be total revenues for 2425, and then the blue bar represents the most up-to-date forecast for this current fiscal year. So, a lot of times what happens is we begin the year with this estimate. We get our estimates from HDL. They are professionals when it comes to economic forecasts. Recently, what we're seeing is that at the beginning of the year, they give us this estimate, and then during the year, we've been seeing a lot of downgrades. So, that red bar just shows you where we thought we would be versus where we are today. But overall, the trend has not been good for sales tax. Since fiscal year 2122, we've seen a decrease of about $1.2 million in this, in these line items. The next large category is TOT, or transient occupancy tax. So, the adopted budget for fiscal year 2425 estimated about $3.3 million in revenue based on the actuals from fiscal year 2324. I lowered that budget by about $50,000. Last fiscal year, we saw about $3.25 million come in in TOT. So, we're trying to take the conservative approach and to assume no growth in this category. Looks like I, so charges for services, so this is another significant category of revenue. For most of these line items, it's pretty much status quo. The one large increase that we're estimating is from zoo revenues. Based on last year's numbers, I think I underestimated zoo revenue. I put about 1.8 in the current budget. Last year, we received about 1.9 million, or a little bit over 1.9, so that, most, most of that increase of $220,000 comes from the increased forecast for zoo revenues. Intergovernmental, so this is looking like it's very much down. That's really misleading because a big chunk of that revenue in fiscal year 2425 was reimbursement for the activities from Cape &amp; Care. During the fiscal year, we isolated Cape &amp; Care and we put them into a new fund. Therefore, those revenues will follow Cape &amp; Care. So, even though that's showing a big decrease of a million dollars, that's because the revenue didn't go away, but it shifted to another fund. If I take out intergovernmental revenue to make it more apples to apples, you can see the bottom line is about a 1% growth in overall general fund revenues. Next, we'll look at expenditures. So, again, we have many different expenditure categories, but it's really only a few of them that end up capturing the entire budget. That includes personnel, outside services, cost allocation and transfers. Outside services, typically, these are monies that we spend on consultants or for electric bills. But the one outlier is our commitment to the Humboldt Bay Fire GPA. For fiscal year 2526, this makes up about 80 to 90% of that category, or that slice of pie. Cost allocation, so what that is, it's essentially overhead. So, certain departments like IT and finance and human resources, we charge those services out to the different departments from another fund, and they come through the department's budget as the cost allocation accounts. And then transfers, transfers are the monies that we transfer over for different projects, as well as a small subsidy for the harbor fund. So, again, with the changes that occurred during the fiscal year of moving the Cape &amp; Care operations out of the general fund, that's somewhat skewed the numbers. When we go back and we compare ourselves to the beginning of fiscal year 2425, what we're showing in the budget is a decrease in overall expenditures, and that's mainly because we shifted those expenses out to another fund. I've gone ahead and adjusted the numbers, so it's more apples to apples. So, you can see that the true bottom line is showing an increase of about 2%. A lot of the increase next fiscal year comes from personnel or salaries and benefits. We adopted a couple new MOUs last fiscal year. In both of those MOUs, we have COLAs of 3%. So, essentially, every employee will receive at least a 3% increase, and that's what's really driving that cost in that category. Outside services, a very similar thing as personnel because of the Humboldt Bay Fire GPA. So, we estimate costs to increase at the JPA by about 3% to reflect an increase in pay. So, that's why you see this category growing at a similar rate as personnel. Cost allocation, so this again is that overhead you see from finance, risk management, IT. Overall, these cost centers were relatively flat. The one exception is risk management, and I'll get into that later on. Debt service, so we have a couple leases for fire apparatus. We are gonna, or this fiscal year 2425, we paid off one of the two leases. So, next year, we only have one lease for the platter truck, and that's why that category is going down. And then transfers, again, these are the monies that we transfer over for street projects, for facility projects, and $175,000 goes to the harbor fund. So, looking at the bottom line when we compare revenues to expenditures, in fiscal year 2425, we did show a deficit. We still expect a deficit in fiscal year 2526, but that has improved by close to $400,000. Just because we show a deficit in the budget doesn't mean that always happens. A lot of times, by the time we get to June, we haven't spent everything that's in the budget. That's fairly typical. If you look at our financial statements, we tend to budget conservatively, meaning that we typically show the worst-case scenario, so that if there are surprises, those surprises are improvements, not things that have gone the other direction. So, next, we'll move into departmental budgets. This is, this again is a zoomed-out look at department operations. So, I'll begin with our largest department, the police. So, beginning with their positions. So, during, or when we adopted fiscal year 2425 budget, we started with 78.7 FTEs. During the mid-year process, we did not adjust positions at police. And again, for fiscal year 2526, we have not adjusted any of the position lists, whether that's changing a title or adding or taking away FTEs. At the top, we have enforcement. That includes our police officers, our police sergeants. We're estimating growth to be about 4.5%. That includes the COLA that's gonna be implemented in July. Then communications, communications is showing a large decrease from budget to budget. There's actually not a large decrease happening. I made an error last fiscal year, and I overestimated their budget. So, that bottom, or that new line at the bottom shows you what it should have been. So, in reality, even though I'm trying to keep it apples to apples by starting with the adopted budget and comparing it to the proposed budget, in this case, at mid-year, I realized that I overestimated that budget. So, overall, communications is set to increase about 8% next fiscal year. The next department is development services. So, their FTEs are decreasing for next year's budget. This is because we are removing a code enforcement officer position and a building inspector position. We are also reclassifying a admin position for a regular part-time planner. Therefore, you see a reduction in the FTEs by about 2.3. When looking at their budget, you can see that planning is going up by about 6.6% and code enforcement is going down by over 17%, and that reflux, or reflects the decrease in positions in that division. In the building fund, the building department, their budget is relatively flat. They did not ask for anything in addition to what they had last fiscal year. Even though their inspector position went away, it wasn't funded last year, and therefore, that's why you don't see the decrease in fiscal year 2526. Our next department is community services. So, community services started the year with 51.8 FTEs. At the mid-year, we added a regular part-time maintenance worker, so that increased their RPTs by 0.7. And then for fiscal year 2526, we are proposing to change a preschool teacher RPT to a full-time preschool teacher. And that, therefore, that's why you see that one position increase from fiscal year to fiscal year. When looking at their budgets by division, you can see there's some that are growing, some that are shrinking. When looking at the Adorni, adult recreation and youth recreation, these budgets are decreasing because of a large pullback in temp salaries. This won't affect their operations. We've looked back at the last few fiscal years at their projections for temp salaries, and we've noticed that they've been a little bit too high for what they need. So, the reason that their budgets are decreasing overall is because of that pullback in temp salaries, but that shouldn't affect any of their operations. In parks, you're seeing that increase due to that additional RPT, as well as some monies for outside services for landscaping. And then in the zoo, we also decreased their temp salaries, but we've increased other line items such as animal food and maintenance that has to do with the canopy walk. Over in Fund 530, the harbor fund, community services has harbor maintenance and the Werffinger operation. Overall, this fund is poised to grow about 5.6%, which is around the average that we're seeing due to the COLAs and due to the cost allocation. And then finally, Fund 660 is the facility maintenance fund overseen by community services. And again, your typical growth rate that we're seeing for fiscal year 2526. During the fiscal year, we made another major change to how we operate, and that was when we split apart Public Works. We essentially took engineering or that function out of Public Works and made it its own department. So, I was able to take those FTEs from last year's budget and to separate what would be engineering versus other Public Works division, or yeah, other Public Works divisions. So, overall, engineering is not seeing any changes to their total FTE count, but they did swap a special project manager for just a regular project manager. So, you'll see the effects of that when I go through their different budgets. Starting with the general fund, so overall, engineering is set to decrease slightly next fiscal year, and that reflects the change in the types of positions they have. In the water fund, engineering is set to grow about 2%. And then in the wastewater fund, about 2.5%. Next, we have Public Works. So, it's the same department, just without engineering. And I forgot to add that code enforcement was previously in the Public Works department, and that's been transferred out to development services. So, again, Public Works is showing no growth in positions. They did adjust the titles a little bit, and overall, showed a reduction in next year's budget. A lot of the, or at least in the general fund, we're seeing a reduction. If you notice, the EOC or emergency operation center division, that's going down by quite a bit. That's not because we're defunding that division, but we're reallocating a position dedicated to the EOC. They're getting, their costs shared with the water and wastewater fund. In streets, right now, we have one less position for a maintenance worker. I believe that one of the maintenance workers moved over to either water or wastewater. In the water fund, Public Works is looking at about 10% growth. And then in the wastewater fund, about 4% growth. Public Works also oversees our equipment operations fund. This is the fund where we budget for our vehicle fleet. So, the reduction in their budget is mainly due to the capital outlay accounts that we use to purchase vehicles. Over the past couple of years, we've made large purchases for both police vehicles and utility vehicles. So, next year, we are planning somewhat of a slowdown in that category. This next chart, it doesn't show you one department. It really shows you the administrative function that comes through in those cost allocation accounts. That includes city administration. This was previously city clerk and city manager. We combined their positions into one list. It also includes city attorney, finance, human resources, and economic development. Not much change to the FTE count. I will point out that finance is going down one position, and city administration is going up one position, but that is because we're moving a position from finance to work in city administration. This position will help with the website and other, you know, web-based content and as well as our Sequoia Park Zoo website and the Visit Eureka website. In economic development, we are reducing FTEs by one position, and we are changing one of the titles to a higher title of project manager. So, overall, in this fund, we're expecting a decrease in the overall budget. I will point out that the city clerk is going up by quite a bit. That reflects that position being moved from finance to city administration. And then city attorney is showing a large decrease. That doesn't reflect any changes to their operation. Right now, we have a city attorney via contract. The city attorney's 2425 budget had enough outside services monies to capture that contract. So, what this is showing is a reflection of the decrease in salaries and benefits, but no change to their overall operation. Economic development is showing an increase despite losing that one position. The reason for that is that in the Cape division, we have an employee that's dedicated to doing video production. Essentially, this person doesn't just work for Cape during the fiscal year. They work for all departments. So, for now, we've moved the funding for that position over to Fund 650 into economic development. This is another fund that I include under general admin. This has to do with the monies that we pay for different insurance products, specifically for liability insurance, property insurance, and workers' comp. This is one area where we're anticipating a large increase by over $700,000 next year. The city works with an agency called CIRA. This is a group of municipalities that work together to buy insurance products. CIRA does their best to keep costs down, but between property insurance and workers' comp, we continue to see those costs go up year over year. Unfortunately, between 2425 and 2526, we are witnessing over a 20% increase. These costs get reflected in every department's budget. Next, we have IT. So, during the fiscal year, IT added a regular part-time position. So, they went from 5 to 5.7 FTEs. Looking at their total budget, they're expected to grow about 8.5%. It's a little more than average because of that additional RPT. And then finally, we have Cape &amp; Care. Cape &amp; Care are fairly unique operations for the city. Cape is actually under the finance department and Care under the city manager's department. What makes these operations unique is that they don't reflect services that the city historically has provided. They're essentially new services that are focused on, you know, social services or mental health. Because they work in these categories, we have identified numerous different outside funding sources to pay for these operations. So, some of these positions are permanent, and some of them are limited term due to the source of funding that is provided to fund these positions. So, looking at the full-time equivalent permanent positions, overall, Cape is going down one position next fiscal year. This position was, has not been filled in previous years, so we decided just to remove it. And then Care is staying at one FTE. When we look at those limited-term FTEs, you can see that Cape has added another FTE funded by outside dollars, and Care is continuing into 2526 with six outside-funded positions. Again, this was a little bit hard to compare because Cape &amp; Care were under the same budget, starting in 2425. And this year, being, being in a new fund, we also separated out the two divisions. Overall, they're growing by over 17%, which the bad news is that's more money for us to spend, but the good news is that we're using outside dollars, specifically grant monies, to pay for all of these increases. Again, I didn't have anything to compare Care to for last fiscal years, so it's best just to look at the bottom line when we're comparing growth in these categories. So, that concludes tonight's presentation. So, we will have some additional budget meetings for the city council. That includes June 17. That's when we'll return with the adopted budget for approval. And then with the finance advisory committee, I believe we have a meeting scheduled for June 11 to go over some additional information that was presented to the city council earlier in the month. But for the next presentation, I will focus on fund balance, and then I will give an update about the CalPERS Fresh Start option. And then I will give an update about the CalPERS fresh start, um, option.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Director Millar? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. I have a few questions. Um, okay. Uh, you started off with, you know, anticipating, uh, an increase in tax revenue, even though, um, projections are down. And so I was just kind of curious why you think there will still be an increase? Is it just sort of general, uh, costs are going up?
Um, so the reason for the increase is with property tax, um, it would be rare to ever see property tax revenues go down because they're based off of the purchase price of the house. Uh, there was an exception when we, during the 2008 event, um, the assessor did adjust prices and that relieved people of property tax, but also hurt the city's revenues. Uh, but since then, um, as we see more transactions, um, in real estate, uh, that typically results in a higher assessed value because the sale price is usually higher than what it was purchased for. So because of that reason and because, um, it's held constant at 1% of the sale price, uh, we should expect property taxes to always grow. Uh, maybe not dramatically, but they'll continue to, to, uh, trend upwards. And because of the increase from just the, the natural, um, turnover of homes, as well as getting more money back from the successor agency because we're paying down those debts, um, that increase of over half a million dollars is covering up the fact that our sales tax revenues are actually, um, expected to go down next year.
Thank you. Um, let's see. I saw in the budget you provided, I don't know if we'll talk about this at a future meeting and if so I can wait, but on page 78, um, the, the housing trust, there's nothing, um, designated for fiscal year, for the next fiscal year. Is that, um, because we're not continuing to add money to that or?
Uh, we're still waiting on the results of the NOFA that we applied for.
Okay, okay, great.
Yeah, once, uh, if awarded, we would come back to council and appropriate funds at that time.
Okay. Wasn't there some conversation, uh, about a percentage of the T O T, uh, for, uh, specifically, um, V R B O kinds of things to be part of the housing trust?
Correct. Um, and we're still tracking, uh, those V D U T O T revenues. Uh, once we know, uh, the fate of the housing trust fund, uh, at that time, we will transfer over those monies into that fund.
Okay. And for now, are those included in the T O T?
Uh, in the T O T number right there, no, they're separate from that.
Okay, okay. Um,
And with, just to add, uh, we've grossed in excess of $100,000, which is, uh, the amount, the threshold that we need to commit to for the housing trust fund.
Thank you. And then I was curious about the removing, removal of a position in code enforcement. Is that because, um, did we, did we have too many people? And is that related to the, you know, changes in implementing the vacancy ordinance or?
No, the original thought of that position was, uh, kind of a backfill position for E P D. And then we lost that position through attrition. And when the transfer went over and new management oversaw it, it was, the responsibilities were still able to be covered by that. And because E P D is getting close to fully staffed, that, that position was temporal when we brought it here.
Okay. And then if we were to, at some point, implement the vacancy ordinance or, you know, maybe it has to change again, would we need potentially another code enforcement type of position at that time or?
Potentially, um, I think something that would be more critical than that would be, um, full implementation of our, um, V D U and permitting program when we have to go out and start, um, inspecting, um, places. So at that point, we reconsider that as well.
And then that would potentially pay for that position?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I was curious about the part-time maintenance work in community services. Um, I feel like we could use a full-time position. Uh, is there a reason that it's only part-time?
So staffing wise, you know, over the last, I'd say four years, five years, we've almost doubled our maintenance staff in, in parks. Um, the previous year, council approved a full-time maintenance worker in Old Town. Um, that was an additional position. This position was a, um, temporary position that was being filled and decided that we'd make that an R P T position. That was done during mid-year at last year's, um, budget. I, from staff's perspective, that should be adequate. Um, we had a lot of staffing issues, both with workman's comp as well as folks being out. Um, we've lost a couple of employees. So there was a time during last fiscal year that we were, had all of the positions allocated, but there wasn't, um, folks filling those positions because of those issues. But we feel that, I think we have 10 full-time staff. When I was overseeing community services, I believe we had five. So there's been a significant increase over the last five years, um, in that department.
Okay. And we'll have you ask one more and then we'll move on and come back to you.
Okay, okay. I can, I can pause an hour and you can come back to me.
Okay. Does anybody, Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I was looking at page, uh, 56 in the opioid settlement money. I thought we had a yearly, we were going to get paid for like 20 years.
You are correct. And I think, um, City Attorney Black can maybe help with that. I know that the money is going towards Cape and Care currently, but.
So we, yes, we expect those monies to come in over the next decade, I believe. And Bob can, uh, fill in the gaps. Uh, the reason why I didn't plug any numbers into, uh, that fund yet is because it, we're still trying to figure out the timing of these payments. Uh, and everything we plan to use, uh, in the current fiscal year, we've already received. So that's in fund balance. And then for future monies, we're still working, because Cape and Care have so many outside funding sources, we're still kind of developing, uh, that budget and how much we're going to need from the opioid settlement. So eventually you will see numbers in there or you will see numbers in the Cape and Care Fund, uh, as reimbursement for those activities.
Okay, I, yeah, I don't know. Bob, we don't need to get into the weeds on that too much.
Well, I'll just say that it's true that, um, almost all the settlements, and I think there have been on the order of 12 to 15, um, maybe slightly more, uh, different settlements with different defendants. Almost all of them involve payment over time, but by and large, they're all front-loaded. So you get a much bigger hit in the first year or two. Uh, and then there is a smaller trail of settlements. Uh, the original ones, uh, were big ones with the distributors and they did go out, I think it was 18 years, um, or maybe 20 years, including the first two, uh, payments that were made. Um, most of them don't go out that far. They're, they're shorter. Uh, but they are still, some portion of them, as a general rule, is still pending.
All right. Yeah, thank you. One, one more question. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, our strategy with these monies is to let it come in and, because we kind of waited for a couple of years. So once we built, you know, a cushion, now we're starting to plan on how we use those monies just because of the volatility and just not, we don't get a lot of information about timing or in terms of receiving those funds.
Thank you. Um, one more quick question on the risk management. What are we going to do about, I mean, that's a significant increase. And I, I probably, it's nothing we can do, but I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Bam.
Oh, no, not at all. Um, I serve on both the board and the executive committee. And Sarah is concerned, um, about the increase. Were, those were projected numbers. We don't even have our, um, final numbers until July 1st. So they were conservative. Hopefully they will come in less, but property, um, right now is a whole thing. And then every time we give raises, um, our workers' comp goes up by that much because, because it's based on payroll. Um, and also in a number of, um, insurance products, payroll plays a role. So in a nutshell, that's it quickly.
Okay, thank you. Um, maybe one more quick question. Um, Director Millar, what do you think about our, our debt service? Is it, it seems like we're, you know, as far as percentage of revenue, it seems like we're in pretty good shape right now, you know? I mean, we're not, we don't have a considerable amount of debt, I guess is my question.
Yeah, in fact, leases aren't even considered to be true debt service just because they're, you know, they're, the timeframe or the term is so short. So when we're looking at bonds, they don't even, uh, we don't even report that we have debt because of the structure of that type of debt. So I would say the general fund, yeah, it's in a very good position to, uh, issue debt because it has none. And the, the rating agency looks at that. That's a big piece of it is both, do you have any current debt or current long-term obligations? As well as do you have any plans for future obligations? So I think this is a unique situation where, uh, the general fund typically doesn't do long-term debt, but because it's for facility improvements and because facilities have lives of, you know, 20 to 50 years, uh, a debt or a bond is very appropriate, uh, in terms of a way to finance those improvements.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. And thank you for the, uh, concise overview of this very much larger document. Something that just jumped out at me, I was curious about under, let's see. On page 228, under the housing programs, there's a, a 28.8% miscellaneous category. Can you, um, help enlighten what that might be?
Yeah, so miscellaneous in that fund, um, is going to capture monies we pay or it's going to capture like grants and contributions, uh, to other, um, agencies. And in that case, um, that would include, uh, the Betty Chin Women's Center as well as the Blue Angel Village. Is that correct?
Yeah, there was an increase when we opened up the, uh, Family and Children's Center across from Her Day Center, um, I believe of 25,000 or 20. Anyway, that was an increase as a part of that operations. And then we also increased it for, um, operations at, uh, Blue Angel Village as well. And that's coming from, um, redevelopment funds, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yet issuing grants from the city to another agency is not, uh, a normal thing you see in a, a department's budget. So that's why it's in that miscellaneous category because there's so few line items that are dedicated to grants being issued, uh, for other agencies.
I believe the total contribution to, um, their operations is 95,000 a year, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Um, is this available, um, by, in PDF form? There are several bar graphs where, uh, I can't tell what the heck's going on. And I was wondering if there'd be something I could mouse over.
Uh, it is available in PDF form, but you're looking at it?
Okay.
It's available online though, and you can zoom in online.
Yeah, we're having issues translating it.
Like, you know, these ones where it's like 100 tiny little slices and I can't tell what's what's. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, little housekeeping. Uh, if you want to discern between two things, they shouldn't be two different colors of blue. There are several things where it's like, this is blue and this is a slightly different shade of blue.
In the, these graphs in the document?
Yeah, it seems, um, you know, if the point is to be able to clock something visually quickly, you can't tell the difference between the colors.
I understand. Um, so we use the third party to, for this budgeting software. So we're limited in what we can control and what we don't control. So we're, they're slowly adding features and we're doing our best to, to use the tool to its full advantage. But sometimes things like colors are off limits. So we'll go back and look and see if we can. It, it's really meant to be an online tool and less of something that you would put in a document. So we're trying to, uh, create an hi, a hybrid, but it's challenging at times. So.
I appreciate that. Thank you. As a, as a matter of transparency, we want it to be as easy to understand as possible. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, so going back a bit, you touched on the intergovernmental funding and it's not so much a loss as it is then it seems a shift in funding to a different, uh, different department, as it were, at least as it relates to Care and some of the other programs.
Correct. And in that intergov- governmental, um, category, uh, it includes a line item for vehicle license fee in lieu, which it's labeled as intergovernmental because it comes from the state and it's over $3 million. So that's the majority of that category. So that's why that, taking out that, um, line item for, um, grant reimbursements for Cape and Care, uh, was so dramatic because typically it's around three, 3 million per year. But because of Cape and Care bringing in this outside money, that's why, uh, over the past few years, that category has gone up by quite a bit.
Okay. And so then that would explain perhaps the, at, at least what might be viewed as a drastic increase in the, in the city manager's office. Because that's where this particular program is going to be housed, correct?
Part of the program.
Part of, yeah.
Yeah, Care is, uh, underneath the city managers or city admin currently under this new budget here. It's under city admin. Um, Cape went over to, uh, finance.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Um, and then something that I think was touched on briefly by Councilmember Castellano, uh, our vacancy program, where are we with that currently? Not that I'm looking for it as a source of revenue, but just more where is it in the context of where things are?
Yeah, there was, um, we're, um, City Attorney Luna, former City Attorney Luna, uh, updated, um, City Attorney Black and Deputy City Attorney, um, uh, Davis on this. Um, there was pending legislation and there we're kind of strategizing on what the next move was. There should be something, um, either coming back as a report or a presentation to demonstrate the status of it or something for action, but, um, they're still in those discussions right now.
Okay, thank you. And then I think it's on page 24. Uh, the other financing sources, uh, the revenue category for all city funds is looking at 100, 100.1% increase. And so I'm curious if there's some sort of breakdown or explanation for how it goes from, yeah, 9.4 to 18.8.
Yes, um, so, and it's hard when you collapse all the funds together and come up with these, the citywide numbers. They, um, so that, why that's growing, um, by so much is because we have, it's due to the wastewater and the bypass project. So with the water and wastewater fund, so we have the operations fund and we also have a, a C I P fund. So I like to separate the projects from the operation because the projects will make the numbers look really volatile. So what happens is, um, essentially, monies get shifted from the operations fund to the C I P fund. And, uh, next year, because we have a, essentially a $20 million project, that's why that, and let me explain further after this, but that's why that, that's such a large increase is because we're plugging in, uh, that bypass project of $20 million. Uh, in addition to that, um, other financing sources will also include, uh, bond proceeds. So if, and we anticipate a bond for the wastewater, uh, fund. So whenever you receive a bond, let's say you receive 10 million from bond proceeds, how you plug that into a budget would be other financing sources.
Okay, so that, yeah, that helps explain that then. That's kind of where my mind was, but I wanted to hear how you answered it because I can only speculate. Um, and, and then looking at the wastewater, uh, capital funds, um, then is that bond being included in the expenditure increase? Or because we're looking, going from, God, what is it? Uh, yeah, it's looking at almost a $21 million increase. So is that predicated on those, on that bond?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have at the moment. So thank you.
Go ahead. Um, Commissioner James Clur?
Yeah, I just had a question on the budget line item report. For the year-to-date activity, what period is that through? For the year-to-date activity, what period is that through? Cause the bottom of the report says it was ran on five twenty, twenty-five. Does that include all activity up to that date?
Uh, that is correct. Um, and depending on the line item, uh, that number is going to give you a true reflection of, uh, what was earned at, on five twenty, twenty-five. And mainly on your expenditure side, uh, on the revenue side of things, um, there's always a delay. Uh, in the general fund, especially with sales tax, uh, we get our sales tax allocation essentially three months later. Cause it takes time for businesses to submit returns and for the state to go through those returns. So if you looked at our sales tax revenue, you would say, whoa, they're really down. And that's because there's a big delay. Uh, if you're looking at the water fund and regular charges, uh, that would be what we receive through water and sewer bills. And those have a thirty, uh, day delay. So that number is going to be pretty good, but not, um, a true year-to-date. So I caught, I mean, you can look at the year-to-date column and in some cases that's going to give you a good, uh, estimate of what, uh, has been spent. Uh, but in some cases, uh, because of that delay, it's not necessarily something that you should, uh, put too much thought in. It's really the, I would say the proposed budget and the, uh, total budget are the better comparables.
Cause there's a pretty big lag in, in revenue for the general fund, even if you take into account like the three months. So you think it's just a timing issue and by the time the fiscal year ends, we'll see that something close to what we budgeted for revenue coming in.
Yes, um, yeah, we don't close the books on the fiscal year until, or for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. We go all the way through September, uh, before we close the books. A lot, or half of our property tax doesn't show up until, uh, July or August. And then our final sales tax allocation is going to be, or it's about September.
And then I had one other question, if that's okay. Um, so in the wastewater fund, I was wondering why in the proposed budget, the pooled cash interest is so low? It goes from being like a hundred and twenty-five thousand to like three thousand next year? And it doesn't seem like interest rates are falling off that fast? Or are we completing a bunch of the projects that those fee and lose are being held for?
Yeah, so I wouldn't expect it to go down that much. I think I just, those are some of the line items I don't like to budget too high because again, when they, what, I mean, our rates are still, or our investment rates are still high. So a lot of times I'm just using, uh, keeping that out of the budget. So when that shows up, it's going to help with fund balance. Because it can't from, uh, during the fiscal year, you know, uh, at first we were earning about five percent. Today that's a little bit under four percent and, you know, by the time we're done with fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, interest rates could be back to one or two percent.
Great. Councilmember Conchaire Stiloch?
Yeah, I had a question, um, about, uh, well, I have about twenty, um, but about sales tax revenue. Um, you were talking about that we have, did you say HDL? That gives the estimation. How long have we been using HDL?
At least since twenty-twelve, but I would have to guess that even a decade prior to that, they're kind of the standard for almost all municipalities when it comes to forecasting.
Yeah, okay. And, um, you, one of the things you said was that, um, you've been seeing it adjusted, um, adjustments come in. Are they adjusting up or adjusting down? In twenty-twenty-five, did they adjust up or down?
They're adjusting down.
In twenty-twenty-four, did they also need to adjust? Did they adjust up or down?
Yeah, it's since fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, it, they tend to be a little too rosy.
Yeah, I already knew the answer, but I just thought it was important for everybody to publicly hear that because I don't think everybody else is going to want to swim through a hundred and thirty-six page PDFs that are on our site. And I just wanted to make sure that that was heard by the rest of the council too, um, that they're adjusting down. Have you been tracking by what percentage they're needing to be adjusted down each year? How far off they've been in their projections?
Don't track the difference. Um, it's, I anticipated, but I, so I, even though when I, I try to, uh, hold back expenditures, um, I don't try to challenge their numbers because I feel like that's, uh, they're still the expert. And I think they're, the way they do it is they're looking at, uh, state trends. And those, when you're, if you're a metro area, like their analysis, I think is going to be, they're going to see a lot less volatility.
Right.
Uh, when you're a, a bigger city. Uh, when you're dealing with, uh, a city that's far away from any metro on the North Coast, uh, they're gonna, there's going to be more volatility because I don't, you know, they're using these averages from across the state and they're not going to capture low, things that are happening locally.
Yeah.
Um, I can tell when it's, or, you know, my gut tells me when they're too rosy, but it's never been to the extent where I feel the need to adjust the numbers.
Yeah.
They've actually been wrong in the other direction in the past. Uh, during COVID, they projected a fifteen percent, uh, decrease in sales tax revenue. And that following year, we saw a record, uh, sales tax revenues. So it's, it's hard to.
I appreciate that. The reason why I wanted to talk about that is I wanted to make the point that we've been declining since late twenty-twenty-one. Um, and I stand by what I said and I'm going to continue to say the recession came here earlier and we're already in it here and we're already starting to feel it and it's starting to ripple. Um, and I, I also have a concern about us, you know, putting any kind of faith or stock in, um, sales tax revenues. And one of the reasons is because what they're seeing with housing prices, foreclosures that are starting, um, and then a decrease in housing sales, um, about a seven percent decrease just in the last year here. So I just, um, first I want to say thank you because I feel like you do a really great job, Lane. But I, um, I, I, this is mainly just for us. Um, I, uh, I, I'm concerned because we're declining quarter over quarter and have been for a while. And I think we need to be making a plan for how we're going to make sure that we're steady through a recession that's already started here. That's my opinion on that. So, um, I'm going to stop there. I do have questions, but I don't want to take up more time on that.
Councilmember Castellano? And then did any other members of the finance advisory board have questions? Yeah, like, okay. I didn't want to like take all the time. Um, let's see, I, thank you. Uh, I was curious, uh, the parks, the outside services landscaping, is that, that's more affordable than hiring staff because it's kind of special projects or?
So it's been hard to figure out what that estimate's going to be from year to year, especially, we had a, a huge benefit for years with the swap crew, um, with the county as well as Cal Fire. Um, since COVID, Cal Fire hasn't been back. We've been trying to get that service back. Um, we had a, a large contract with, um, somebody to do more of our open space management with a lot more crews and take over things, get jobs done a lot quicker. We found a cheaper option to that, so we kind of kept it where it was previously, just in case that other option doesn't pan out. Ideally, we get swap crews back. Swap crews were huge for us. They did a lot of the work that a lot of other, um, consultants would not do. And so we're spending a lot of time with our staff doing that work, um, that they used to do. Um, but no, the amount that's in those services, um, I mean, we, we can look at that, but one person to do the, a, a big job like that, like we may have, you know, the dog park and you have all of that debris that's around it and stuff like that. That's basically our whole crew for a day, um, to do that when we can hire somebody for, for a day at a, at a more cost efficient way. But we are constantly looking at that. I mean, it's been a tough transition not having those, um, services that we previously had and we're trying to nail that down.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was curious with the, you know, the bond, um, maybe it won't be seen this year, but just in terms of like how that might play into facilities maintenance as we're kind of like undergoing construction and things like that. Will we need more people performing those duties or is that?
For the big projects, so city hall, municipal auditorium, operations, operations complex is going to be all.
It's its own thing.
It's its own thing. When we talk about here, I think the relocation part of it, I think we discussed about this a little bit. That's why we're kind of bringing in the municipal auditorium to potentially have a relocation spot for folks while city hall is being done. Um, I think a lot of that work's going to be preemptive to that. Right now we're looking at, um, digitizing, the majority of the space that's taken up at the municipal auditorium is, um, uh, documents, um, plans, documents, those type of things. So we're really trying to, I don't want to say clean house, but we're trying to figure out what we do need to keep and what's worth digitizing. It, it would be hugely efficient when we get fastest because right now when we get a PRA or we get a contractor that comes in and says, I want the building plans for this particular parcel, we're taking a staff member going down there, looking through all of these files, finding them and bringing them back up here. Digitizing that would be massive for us as far as not only public records act requests, but also for just day-to-day operations and, um, development and permitting and all of those things.
Thanks. Uh, so contract with enterprise, is that still serving us for our fleet? Do you feel like that's, you like it? It's good?
Kelly, excuse me. Department head Alan?
Welcome.
Good evening. Um, yeah, it's still serving its purpose and we have our July meeting with our account managers to look at the next twelve months. But yes, we are putting in new vehicles like EVs and it's working out well. Yes.
Thanks. Those are all my questions.
Okay. Any further questions? Councilmember Conchaire Stiloch?
I apologize if this was already asked. I just wanted to confirm, um, the department for city manager, the dramatic increase, that's because CARE is over there, is that right?
Correct, or yes.
Okay. Yeah, I had somebody say, why is it seventy-something percent, seventy-eight percent or something like that, but it's CARE, right, entirely? Okay. Um, and then I had, let me get over to city attorney really quick. I just wanted to confirm that for city attorney, um, that the difference in that is, well, actually, can I have you explain that? It's about thirty-two percent from the prior year. That's from contracts last year or?
Uh, so the large decrease is because, um, now that we're under contract for attorney services, uh, we don't need to fund that city attorney position. Um, and because there was such a robust outside service or outside legal budget, uh, in the city attorney's office, is that that budget was enough to absorb the costs of the contract city attorney. Um, so the, the decrease is because there's no longer that city attorney position. Um, but it's.
I mean, there's no longer somebody in the position, not that there's no longer a position.
I'm sorry. So there's still a position in the budget, but it's not being funded because we're currently under contract. And that contract is being paid for, uh, through the outside services line item.
Okay. Can you help me understand then, um, why, uh, the proposed twenty, proposed twenty-twenty-six though is still lower than what the twenty-twenty-four was?
Because we expected, because of that contract, we were essentially saving the city attorney's, um, budget, uh,
I see.
Quite a bit of money.
I see. Okay, so, um, but this is not that we're not budgeting for a full-time city attorney once Bob is done with his, or Attorney Black is done with his forty-month stint.
Yeah, as long as we have that position list showing that a city attorney FTE, uh, that means it's can, still in the budget.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Uh, again, going back, I think we already covered, uh, the sales tax decline and the downgrades. And so I'm curious, uh, because the general fund as it is, is looking at around what, three, three quarters, you know, almost point, seven hundred and fifty thousand, almost, uh, for a deficit. And so are there any specific strategies we're looking at as this potentially ongoing? Are we going to look at reserves to help cover those type of things? Wh- where are we at in this situation?
So the, the Calpers fresh start, um, concept or option, uh, the reason I'm proposing to, to do the fresh start is because we level, because between now and twenty thirty, thirty-one, we're expecting over a million dollars of increased unfunded liability payments. And if what we can do is rather than go up this, you know, expenditure ramp, we can say, we can fresh start, meaning what they'll do is they'll make that schedule of payments flat. So we'll go up a little bit, but then we'll maintain a flat payment schedule out past, uh, twenty thirty, thirty-one. And when I reduce the, the degree of increase on that unfunded liability payment, then what I, what I'm doing essentially is I'm letting the revenue side or catch up. So I'm reducing the growth of the expenditure side and allowing hopefully over time, sales ta- or not sales taxable, actually, sales tax, hopefully that increases over the next five years. And if I can get those rates to be in, in line, then we avoid having to go through reserves or to make cuts. So that's the option I'm going to start with. If we continue to see this trend where sales tax is going down year over year, then we might have to make or come up with another strategy. But I feel like we're, at least on this graph, we're starting to bottom out and hopefully, uh, once we find that bottom, we'll start to go back up. COVID did inspire a lot of, uh, taxable sales. So I think that peak kind of misled us, maybe we thought, or sometimes it can give the impression that things are always going to go up like that. But I think if you zoomed out, uh, ten years, you'd see that, um, over time, the trend is going up. It's just in the last five years that we've experienced this boom and bust.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
I think, um, Councilmember Fernandez and Chura Stiloch bring up good points about revenue and, and yeah, I think there's some potential for a recession. I think the budget's very sound and I appreciate you, you know, working with the numbers and giving us something that is, you know, decent and it's something that we can all live with. Um, but I, I look at all these different categories like, um, the Humboldt Bay operations, right? How do we generate revenue there so that we're not, and, and maybe ask the question is how, how much are we contributing to, um, Humboldt Bay operations?
Uh, the harbor fund?
The harbor fund, sorry. Uh, roughly, or, I'm sorry, not roughly, a hundred and seventy-five thousand from the general fund.
So it's not that much.
So i- it's changed significantly. I think it was two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. Anyway, we did an analysis of the harbor fund. A lot of the issues that we had were very longstanding. Um, for decades, we were giving away our property at well below market rate. We were also, um, hey, we had a lot of bad leases and we had some issues with the allocation of funds and how we were paying for our harbor staff. The vast majority of our maintenance staff in harbor are not at the marina doing marina work a hundred percent of the time. So back then when we did this analysis, we basically changed it, I mean, we were close to a million, weren't we subsidizing it? Back in the day. And so what we did is we changed the allocation so that, you know, when you're working on the, the, the trail, that's more of a general fund thing. And so we changed the proportion of, um, which funds we're paying for them. So we didn't have a hundred percent of our maintenance workers being paid from the operations funds. We think we took thirty percent of that and said it's general fund. So we did that and then we also analyzed all of our leases, all of our leases. There's a couple of them that are still pending since then that have been changed. And we've gotten more market rate. We consult with a, um, commercial realtor, get the cost per square feet. And, you know, we've increased one of our leases by thirty-three percent, um, over that year. I mean, over the years. And so it's gotten a lot better. We're still not where we need to be. It doesn't generate the revenue. If we were to raise the rates to where we were covering that hundred and seventy-five, I don't think we would be very competitive. So if we changed our mortgage rates to what they should be or changed our facility rental rates to what they should be, I think we would push ourselves out of the market in that area. And so we're still trying to get back to the point where we're, we're updating those leases and making better. We are getting new leases. Um, we're going for a lease right now with the growers association and, um, um, Fisherman's Marketing Association. So we're, we're trying to get there. It's definitely gotten a lot better. The one thing that was similar to that was a building fund and the building fund has completely turned around over the last five years and it's, it's in the black now.
No, I think staff have done a, a great job of, of making those funds more solvent, you know, but. No, I think staff have done a great job of making those funds more solvent, you know, but long-term, right? I think of the parking fund, the Harbor Fund, like all these things that we got to figure out and make tougher decisions about how do we generate some more, given if sales tax continues to decline or something? Just to be thinking about those tough decisions, like how much can we move things up to generate revenue, to make those programs solvent and stay solvent. It's just a bigger thing for us to think about. But overall, it's a great budget and thank you for making it rosy.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we will open this, are there further questions? We will open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none in the audience, I can't see Zoom. No one back on Zoom? Okay. So we'll bring it back to council to receive this report and how do we proceed with that? Do you want a motion or do we just receive the report? Receive the report. And then just another point of order. Do we need to adjourn this meeting before our next one or do we just move forward? I got you. So now, excuse me. So would you first clarify that point for me?
Yes, we need to adjourn this joint meeting. And then we will start our council meeting.
Thank you. And now we'll bring it back to council for comments. Councilmember Castellano.
Sorry, I felt like that kid in elementary school for a second. Thank you. Two quick comments, you know, I do think I would like to see that part-time community service maintenance worker be full-time. And then also to what Councilmember Bauer brought up, that, that was on my list too in terms of, you know, I think every JPA, every municipal organization, every nonprofit that we know of is seeing their insurance rates just continuing to like increase exponentially. And I do think that there should be some advocacy lobbying in terms of some legislative changes around that and maybe how that works with like litigious, you know, the capacity for people to lawsuit and like thresholds around that. Those are big, long-term things and for sure, like big industry investment and those things not changing. But I do think when we look at the cost to citizens, it's really important to start thinking about how cities, how people start to make changes to that industry. Yeah. And so I do think it's something just to think about, like whether there are lobbyists working on this and we are participating in those efforts, whether that's through Cal Cities or, you know, with the county. I don't know. I don't know what it looks like, but I think that there needs to be big changes to that industry. And I know that we have a local representative who's also really interested in that sector. So something that I would love for us to have on our radar.
Councilmember Moulton?
Since we're talking about what we'd like, I, I see the digitizing of our records. I see that slowdown touching every department. And if it were possible to have a temporary employee to help with the actual act of that. I know we have some folks in-house that are working on organizing that effort. But if there was, if it was possible to hire somebody temporarily to just do the actual scans until it is done, the sooner that's done, the more smoothly everything's going to run all over.
Yes, we hire students during the summer. We've, I think this is our third summer to do that. We are also looking at an RFP that will do the larger, some consultant or a person, a company to come in and pull those larger plans that we don't even have a capacity for in our printers, printers to do it.
You mean like physically larger? Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah. So we're looking at all those things. And then you'll notice that there is a position change to a records coordinator in city attorney's office, basically a reclass. And that person is going to be really proficient at making these changes happen. So.
Great. I saw that and I was afraid she was going to be doing all the scanning herself.
Oh, no.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we will adjourn this joint session of the City Council Finance Advisory Board. And we will take a short break and then come back. Thank you guys for being here. Okay, welcome to this, welcome to this city council special meeting. It's Tuesday, May 27. We will open this meeting again with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Dro Gigi. Past actions by local, state and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
Here.
Mayor Bregel?
Here. Public comment pursuant to the Brown Act, section 54954.3A. The public shall be provided an opportunity to speak only on items that are listed on the special meeting agenda. Public comment on individual items will be taken after staff presentation. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 211-22, City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. And our first reported action item is the C Street Bicycle Boulevard. And who will be reporting on that? City manager? Come on up, Director Willer. Thank you. And welcome.
Thank you. Yeah. So tonight we have the C Street Bicycle Boulevard award in front of you. We had a good turnout for contractors who were interested in this project. And RAO construction was the low bidder. And so that's what's your, on your agenda summary tonight for recommendation. Recommendation to award to RAO and approve the funding for construction for this project. A little background on the project. The C Street Bike Boulevard kind of came through early planning efforts to start to look at the city's bicycle, non-motorized transportation network. You know, in previous to 2020, the cities, or I should say 2015 or so, the city started looking a little bit more seriously at like really doing some work on facilities in, within the city to help accommodate bicycle use. In particular, the H and I corridor was kind of that first avenue into that arena with pursuing funding for the H and I corridor, which has now been completed and is in use out there today. At that time, we started looking at, there was interest from council and the community to also look at either expand the network or make our facilities more robust as that whole culture of bicycle transportation design and function grew throughout the country. We started looking at non-motorized transportation corridors. We came to council and presented on non-motorized transportation planning for the entire city. This was in 2020. At that time, we did an extensive kind of run-through on a number of projects, including the Beta Zoo project. C Street Bicycle Boulevard was also highlighted in there extensively, looking at the different ways that you could really go for a low-level traffic stress type of transportation, bicycle transportation corridor. There are many different types of bike facilities, whether it's a multi-use trail, class one trail, class two bike lane, class three bike lane, class four cycle tracks. So there's a lot of different types of facilities and there's kind of some variation between the different types. And the thing that the city had at the time that was a lot of class two, that didn't have a lot of separation from traveling vehicles. And so that's where you see H and I corridor, we've created a buffer, kind of some separation from cyclists and motorized vehicles. There was also some bicycle boulevards in the city at the time, but those bicycle boulevards were more or less signs indicating that this street was also a bicycle boulevard. So not a lot of indication as what's going on there, not a lot there to indicate to the traveling vehicles or to traveling cyclists as to that facility. So the push was really, the desire there was really have facilities that would cater to lower-level traffic stress individuals who really wanted to be able to use a facility without having to have as much vehicle traffic kind of interacting with vehicles throughout the corridor. And so that's where the C Street Bike Boulevard kind of came to be, really focusing on creating a facility that had those design features that would kind of reduce traffic volumes on those streets. It wouldn't necessarily reduce access to anybody living along the streets. It was more to try to inhibit people using a facility like C Street as a, as a cut-through street to get from one side of town to another, to get from one area to another where they're not really, that isn't their destination and really allow for that street to be a way for cyclists to get from one part of town, say like the old, old town downtown area to the Henderson area, Henderson Center area. So be able to get across town without having to navigate as much traffic. So that's kind of the, the big picture as far as C Street. That, this facility also went through the Transportation Safety Committee a number of times. There's a presentation kind of similar to what was given to council as far as like the going through the individual design aspects, some of the diverters, the one-way street segments, the rapid flashing beacons. So those really high visible crossings of the more busy streets that, that kind of cross C Street to really allow for both the cyclists to be seen, vehicles to be alerted that there is somebody there trying to use those intersections. So to get back on track there, TSC reviewed it. And then we also, it was a core component of our recent bicycle master plan. So that project at the time hadn't been, was just, just awarded funding. And so it had always been part of our planning is like one of our core north-south routes for cyclists to get across town. And the, so in the bike plan, which was brought out into, had multiple community meetings. So there was two virtual community meetings, a one-in-person community meeting. It was brought in front of council twice. And then there was also a tabling event and a pretty robust outreach component with that where, you know, there was media announcements, we had an email list. We had a project task force that was made up of, you know, bicycle, bicycle folks who helped our people around that industry or that community to help kind of influence the master plan. So there's a lot of different ways outreach was, engagement was had through the bike planning process that had the C Street Bike Boulevard as part of it. Another aspect, another way this project, it's, it's been in the CIP since 2020. So that's been one of the projects in the transportation section of the CIP. It's been presented in the CIP almost every year as a project there. Additionally, we've gone after two active transportation grants. The first round, we were not successful. In the second round, we were, and that's why we're here today, talking about actually funding a facility like this. The project's been in the HCOG VROM, the Regional Transportation Planning Document, roughly that same order magnitude 21, 22, it was in VROM as part of a complete streets project for the city of Eureka. Let's see. So that's a little bit about the background on the project. And while we're here tonight, as far as awarding the contract and available for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Director Willer? Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. And thank you for the diligence in the, in the report and the timeline that you've given us. A few questions I have. So you said that this was included for, for quite a few years in the capital improvement projects plan that we've had at least since 2020. You said that this was also included in the, in the planning for the Beta Zoo Trail. Did I catch that correctly or?
Excuse me. In 2020, we presented to council a non-motorized transportation planning update. The Beta Zoo Trail was also update, was also included in that update at the same time.
Okay. All right. So thank you for that. And then you'd said that there were community meetings conducted around this, that there had been outreach, there had been email lists. And I'm curious, at least in terms of the community meetings, when were those held? How were those held? I know you'd said that there are some that had been virtual, but you know, at least generally, can you recall the dates for any of those?
Yeah. So when I said that, I was referring to the Bike Master Plan that C Street Bike Boulevard was included in. Yeah. So that, we started that planning process in late 2023. And we had, let's see, virtual community meeting on October 26, 2023. Another one in July of 2024. And then in, we also had another in-person meeting in March of that same year in 2024. And then we did a tabling event.
So when we talk about these, these community meetings, this is more done as a general type of outreach, not a specified neighborhood like we would if there were some sort of development going on?
Correct. Yeah. This was, this was with the bike planning process where the C Street Bike Boulevard was kind of one of the, one of the projects. It was intertwined with the entire bike network.
Have, for these larger type of plans, have we ever done anything like in a more niche community type of outreach? Like, hey, if we're going to have something come through here or we're going to turn this into a one-way, we're going to reach out and talk to this particular section of the neighborhood?
Typically, that comes to the Transportation Safety Committee if there's going to be that sort of thing. So there'll be outreach through that, through the TSC. And then that gives that venue for feedback.
And, and has that been done to the best of your memory? Because I don't recall that, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's been, from the standpoint of, you know, like having a, for the one-way sections, if that's what you're referring to, that hasn't come to the TSC. We have had it, it's been to the TSC twice though, as far as like the planning of the corridor, like specifically a presentation to TSC, talking about the different elements there.
Okay. And then my last piece, when we're talking about low-traffic volumes, I, I can see why you would likely consider C, or at least C Street. And so I'm curious, you know, to some extent, and I can understand again from a traffic perspective, but at least getting people on bikes, getting them through populated areas or even some of the commercial areas. Why wouldn't we consider E or F as those go directly through Henderson Center?
Yeah. So there's some constraints that we have with, you know, when it comes to what we call classified streets. So those are the ones that are, you know, your arterials, Prince arterials. And I think F, maybe E fall into that category. When you're looking for a bicycle boulevard where you want to have that low-traffic stress, you really look for a residential, you know, a residential area where you're going to have like the lowest level of traffic. You don't want to change your, change your traffic flows on the classified streets. And I'm fairly certain F Street falls in that category. I'm not 100% sure on E. And then trying to have a little separation from like H and I as far as like, you know, you don't want to have one corridor, you know, have your corridor stacked up too much. You want to try to provide opportunities kind of throughout the city. And that's really what the bike plan, if you look at that, it provides this network. And C Street is just a good one. It connects like down to C Street Market, you know, and Old Town. And while it doesn't go right into Henderson, it really does that connection where the trail comes in there. It's first and C, that's where it kind of, it stops before going on the boardwalk, which is a great connection point, you know, kind of transitioning. If somebody wanted to go from, yeah, so the waterfront trail all the way down to the south end of town, more or less, and get towards Henderson Center. It doesn't deliver them directly, but it gets them pretty close.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Just to Councilmember Fernandez's question, one of those outreach meetings did take place at Westside Jefferson Community Center. And was, I, I attended it and it was very well-attended. There are great facilitators there, which is, you know, probably the community center most proximate to the C Street Bike Boulevard location. So there was a lot of public input from people in the neighborhood right there.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
Yeah, along those same lines. I live one block off of C Street. I didn't find out about it until I was elected. I, I am curious like what the, what the outreach looks like for, I have a lot of elderly neighbors that are not on Facebook and are, you know, not, you know, probably really tech savvy. What, what does the outreach? What, what does the outreach look like for reaching members of the, that community?
Well, excuse me, I think we're gonna, you know, the, the plan is to, similar to, in a better, in a better fashion than H and I, do some outreach on how the community, how the corridor could be used, you know, as far as like navigating kind of different traffic configurations. So we're going to have some new traffic configurations there and trying to put some education outreach information on our website and then probably making sure that we get notification out to folks who, you know, live on the street, but also, you know, try to do media blasts is the easiest way. Sometimes it's hard, it's, it can be expensive to do mailers to everybody or go door-to-doors, it takes a lot of resources. It can be a challenge from that standpoint to get to people, or owners especially.
No, I understand, I just am thinking, you know, again, with people that are, you know, I feel like a lot of our, oftentimes our outreach is, you know, we're kind of leaving a generation in the dust, they're not as, you know, good at some of this stuff or not as inclined to be involved in it. And it, it seems like we should be, even if it is expensive, I mean certainly the project's expensive, that we should be, you know, some kind of mailer, something that, you know, people that are older are going to open and look at, or, or even, you know, signage or something leading up to the meetings or something that we could maybe try to do something that is like a hard copy form of outreach and, you know, just because it is a big change. And I think, you know, it's different when, you know, bicycle and I like cycling too, I use H and I, but it's different when, you know, enthusiasts show up to something versus when, you know, people who are going to be directly impacted because they live right there, get to show up. I just was curious how that worked, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this meeting up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Alright, my name's Jessica Repolds, and I'm here as a longtime homeowner of C Street. I'm here to formally oppose C Street Bicycle Boulevard as it's currently proposed. I'm concerned about the lack of community engagement. I have lived on C Street for nine years and not once has anyone on C Street been notified about this project. There was no flyer, no mailer, no community meeting, and I understand that they're expensive, but you guys send us a water bill, you guys can add a little line that says, hey, by the way, we're going to turn your street in parts into one-way, just an idea. Was there a survey done, like SEQA? Was there ever a conducted, anything with members that live on C Street? Everything I heard that was just presented was from people who ride bikes and was, and then they said there was a meeting. I don't know if you guys see a map of Eureka, but the closest community center to us would be Jefferson Center, not the other one you guys mentioned. So we're very far from there. We're in the same district, but the distance is pretty far. Additionally, I'd like to better understand the logic behind selecting C Street. He mentions that there was lights and that it's a slower traffic. B Street already has lights, flashing lights on Boone, why not pick B Street? Why C Street? It makes no sense to me. What exactly are we trying to direct people from? I heard from Old Town to Henderson Center. Again, if you're trying to find the distance between H and I, then again, go to Union, go down more, why so close? So as someone who lives on the street, I would love to see something come to us, brought to us, the people, I can guarantee you, no one on C Street actually knows this is happening, so it's being tucked away, and you guys are preaching transparency? This is the way you provide transparency? Let us know what's happening on our streets. I understand, would any of you guys like to see this happen on your street? Just all of the blues, just because I happened to read your guys' notes, as I knew that it was happening, if not, I would have had no idea until I woke up and my yard was being dug up in the front. Thanks.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one here, do you see anybody on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to comment, please raise your hand and unmute. Tyler?
Hello, am I, am I on?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I guess, I just wanted to voice my support. I think that a project like this would be great for the town, provide a great connection from the bike path into Arcata, into Old Town, and then down to the far side of Eureka. It's just a, a great project to me. Uh, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Tyler.
Is there anyone else on Zoom? Please raise your hand. I see no one else, mayor.
Okay, seeing no one, we will bring this, oh, we do have one more in the, in chambers. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you, my name is Brett Gronemeyer, I'm a resident of Eureka, and I wanted to extend my support for this project. Eureka is a very, is a bikeable city, you know, most destinations are within three miles, and it's relatively flat except for the gulches, and the climate's mild except for the rain and drizzle. But, you know, a high, a high-quality bicycle facility like this one, it adds a needed north, north-south bike route roughly halfway between the H and I Street couplet and Broadway. It crosses Wabash where the bike lanes on Wabash end, creating connectivity to the Sixth and Seventh Street bike lanes to the north and, and the Harrison-Henderson bike lanes to the south. You know, this type of facility, like Director Willer was mentioning that, you know, it's good to have a, a good mixture of different bike, bike facilities in the city because not everybody is confident when they're riding and that they want to ride with, with a lot of traffic, and this would create a nice quiet corridor for, for cyclists. And I think the residents would also, you know, appreciate the, having less traffic and, and less vehicles speeding down their street that, that this project will bring with the, with the volume management and speed management features it's going to contain. You know, and I think, you know, a lot of people talk about, you know, Eureka and why, you know, young people and families don't, don't stay here, and I think this is the kind of facility that will help attract, make, make Eureka more attractive to, to young families and, and young people who want to make this, you know, their, their home, having a facility like this. So anyway, that's, those were my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion, a second, and then comments. Councilmember Fernandez?
Motion first.
Motion first.
Okay, I would move, I would move that we postpone this until the June 17th meeting.
I'll make a substitute motion, or wait, I guess if it doesn't get a second, I don't need to make a substitute motion, sorry.
Yeah. Motion fails for lack of a second?
Can I ask a clarifying question with the thought processes on delaying that?
You can.
Okay, well, that's why I wanted to ask first if I had to make a motion. Again, it's largely because, you know, as I've said previous councils, I'm generally supportive of these type of projects, even with the support that we have here tonight, I am still supportive of it. The issue I have is the outreach because I understand that, you know, as, as city government, we do the de minimis, we do what's necessary, we do what's required, but that community outreach is an ongoing process and I don't feel that we've done that in this situation. And so that's why I'm asking for that postponement, so at least that way there's still a conversation to be had, even though at the next meeting I would be voting to move this forward.
Thank you for that clarification. So with that, we're still waiting for a motion and a second for further discussion.
I can make a reg, a different motion then, if that, okay. I move to declare RAO Construction Inc. the low bidder for bid number 2025-17, the C Street Bicycle Boulevard project, and award bid number 2025-17 to RAO Construction Company for the amount of $2,188,000 and approve, I probably don't need to say all this, $2,344,000 for construction, which includes a contingency of approximately 7%.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Comments? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I actually, I'm going to vote no on this, and I think it's because of previous meeting, what we just discussed, it's actually, I think, I live one block off of C Street. It's a decent street, it's still in decent shape, and I think this is a, I can see the, the use and I also, I like cycling, I use H and I and J, and I, I think we, we have a good connection. I think that this would be nice and the planning around it, I think would be nice. I do think we need to have more robust outreach going forward with anything that is going to directly impact people in situations like this, there, there does, I think we need to make sure that people, I think that's a good point, that we, we send out water bills, maybe there's some way for us to kind of target and put information somehow, I'm not sure. But actually, I think it's, it's more of a budget thing for me, I think I'm going to start weighing things based on nice but not necessary. C Street is still in good shape, I see this as nice and beautiful but not necessary.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember Moulton and then Castellano?
I definitely agree that this is the sort of thing that we should be sending physical mail to people about. Anyone who is on C Street in an affected area should have gotten at least a postcard that said, hey, there's a big project that's going to change the nature and the structure of traffic flow. If it also said, hey, slower traffic is safer and makes it more of a neighborhood street and less of a crosstown thoroughfare, I think that could also generate some support for this kind of thing. But waiting until we have to send it out because basically the project is already at the point where there's not a lot of stopping it, is not good for generating public input, collaboration, support. I'd like to see something physically go out as soon as possible, if that's possible.
Councilmember Castellano?
I appreciate, I, I do deeply appreciate people's concerns around public input. I just want to clarify, this is about awarding the construction for this item and not about the Bicycle Boulevard, actually, you know, and whether or not that has been approved, which we've already approved through numerous public meetings, including very significant, you know, that were on council agendas, you know, including extensive public outreach. I have attended at least two public meetings, and I understand that sometimes people miss something, I miss things too and am frustrated by it, but also I just want to speak to the fact that this really is for awarding construction to a process that we've already approved on council. And so this isn't about whether or not to have a C Street Bicycle Boulevard, this is about like who's going to build it, and this is grant-funded, and, and I think just delaying the process will only like bog down government process to something that we've all been in agreement with for now years. So just to say, I would like to see this move forward expeditiously versus delay something, you know, that has had many, many, many people, bicyclists, non-bicyclists, residents, all commenting on.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing that this is unlikely to move forward, and again, I have to take ownership for any previous council action before I came on, so it's less an issue of, of that particular process. And again, just more, again, the, the community outreach is a continuous process moving forward. And, and so I, going off of what Councilmember Moulton had stated, which is notification moving forward, is there something that we could include at least over the course of this next month to notify folks that this project is likely to move forward? Again, not knowing how the rest of council's going to vote until we get there, I assume that it's likely to move forward with, you know, the dissent of at least one, including myself now, but is there something at least to move forward saying that this project is occurring for those folks along that C corridor?
So we can, and I just want to be clear, what's agenda is tonight, as, as Councilmember Castellano had said, that is it. I think if this is a more general issue and not a specific issue, that that should come back at some point as a future agenda item as to what are the parameters for those notifications as far as this specifically here? We can do more outreach, I think that from a funding standpoint of going and, and, I don't know if that takes necessarily the council direction, but we can definitely do some more outreach and have contests. I would be concerned about doing that and you guys making this determination that it's going forward, what, what are we accomplishing?
Okay, so do we have any further comments? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I feel like, you know, speaking to Councilmember Castellano's point, I, I totally see your point. I do think, yeah, there were a number of decisions, you know, that were made, particularly even just in the period of time between when we were elected and when we took office, there was quite a few decisions that were made. And so I, I understand that, I think, and I get what you're saying, I think this is going to start, I, one of the reasons why I've continued to vote along with some of the things that were already decided two and three years before we took office at least, is because I've been watching and waiting to see where we were at economically, and I think things have progressed, and I don't think it's any different than any other, you know, if somebody's building onto a house or planning some other things in their life that they might change what that looks like because the financial situation looks different. So for me, that's going to start to change.
Councilmember Castellano?
Just a couple points of clarification too, this is a grant-funded program, right?
Yes, ATP grant that went to council initially for approval with the project, it was not successful, then came back again as a second round, and was approved by council for a resolution to accept the grant funding for this project.
And we had the bike plan before us, really recently, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything further? Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Three yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez and Councilmember Contreras Deloche dissent, motion carries.
Thank you, and we will move on now to letter of support for AB, geez, I can't see that number.
609.
609, and will that be with City Attorney Black?
I, I believe Councilmember Castellano was going to
Great, thank you, Councilmember Castellano.
Okay, I, I wasn't totally planning on doing the report for this, but I'm here, I'm game, I'm down, I'm going to do it. Okay, I'll just give a quick overview of AB 609. So both of these items before us, the next two items are housing-related legislation that's currently moving through the legislature. AB 609 creates an exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, for environmental-friendly housing projects which comply with local requirements. This specifically exempts SEQA process in denser, more like infill-related areas. I did speak with Director Kenyon on this and she is very supportive of this bill, so just for that. Councilmember Fernandez did ask a question in terms of, so, so projects have to meet a minimum density threshold in order to qualify for this exemption, and I did reach out. Unfortunately, I, I've been in conversation with Aaron Eckhaus, who works with YMB about this, and he had an engagement at seven, I was hoping we could get, so he can't answer these questions, but I did ask him about like what our density numbers are, and they, via text, and they are actually 7.5 for us because we are a incorporated city in a rural county. So just, just so you know, that one wasn't like specifically marked out there.
The NICE average between 10 and 5, okay, okay.
And so this, you know, any, any plot of land that is environmentally sensitive would still have to go through SEQA, so this is really speaking to plots, plots of land that could be suitable for housing in areas that are, have kind of through the general plan updates gone through a SEQA process, and so this is kind of saying that that SEQA process could also apply to these kinds of development.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Councilmember Castellano? Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, just to note, I had asked that question when we took a brief break because I wanted to know, so, nothing, nothing nefarious going on there, but I am, I, I am curious though, sorry, I just moved my screen around and now I've lost all my notes, never mind.
Okay, so if we have a never mind, we will open this item up Okay, so if we have a never mind, we will open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one in chambers. I don't see anybody on Zoom, do you? We'll bring it back to council for a motion a second and then comments. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make a motion to authorize Mayor Burgele to sign and sta- and staff to transmit letter in support of AB six oh nine.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments? Okay, please vote.
Unan- five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Which moves us to letter in support? Are these the same?
No.
Six oh nine?
Seventy-nine.
Oh, down, there's a typo. I see. Okay, seventy-nine. And will be Councilmember Castellano be reporting on this as well?
Sure, great. Thank you for considering this. So this is, uh, Senate, Senate Bill, uh, seventy-nine, uh, which is, uh, one that, um, Scott Weiner brought forward, which is oh, um, allowing, uh, transit agency land use authority and transit-oriented development upzoning. And so this is areas that are really, uh, specific to, in proximity to transit centers. Um, I did reach out to, you know, be- because, and primarily, I will, I'll be, I'll be real. This, um, is going to particularly, uh, create more transit opportunities in more urban areas. But, um, one of the, uh, so, so there's kind of three different areas that, that it will serve. Uh, one is kind of tier one, major transit stop served by heavy rail, um, high-frequency commuter rail. We, we don't qualify. Uh, tier two, though, major transit stop served by light rail, high-frequency commuter, commuter rail, and bus rapid transit. So this is something that, uh, Humboldt Transit Authority is currently developing, is rapid transit. And this is transit with, uh, fifteen-minute wait time or less. There's some other qualifications, but it's very likely that we will be meeting those thresholds in the coming years. And so this would allow for, basically, easier development of housing, um, in our area. And I, I just did hear from Aaron Eckhaus. He could jump on if, if we want him to, uh, if there's more specific questions. And I'll, I'll stop.
I will add that I don't know if this qualifies, but in our most recent regional transportation plan, we did designate major transit stops in the city of Eureka, and I don't know if that's the qualification that triggers this. It potentially could be, but those major transit stops are on Harrison F, um, H, and Third, and there's one other location. But we do have three designated major transfer stops in our update to the regional transportation plan with, um, HCOG.
So do we have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Councilmember Bauer?
I, and, um, so I'm looking at the bill, which is a monster of, uh, of language, really, in many pages. But, um, tier two, um, says that "A developer may build up to sixty-five feet or up to the local height limit, whichever is greater." So that, that gives me some pause, because this council would have no oversight of that, and you could build a sixty-five-foot-tall building on Harrison F, you know. So that is a concern. And, and then there's a local control thing, and I'll throw that out there as a Cal Cities, uh, you know, director, that they're very much opposed to it. And I know, I mean, we've done a lot for housing in this community, and we're all very supportive. But I think the ability to not, or the lack of ability to affect any kind of oversight over these projects is concerning to me.
So that was a comment. Do we have any further questions? Okay, seeing no, oh, Councilmember Moulton?
What is our current height limit in that area?
So I don't have it in, in front of me, um, but different zoning designations, whether you're in inland or coastal, have different height designations, um, at those major transit stops. I don't know for sure. I, I, the one at Third and H is really high. I think it's, you can go up to a hundred feet technically, um, there, because we've had discussions about the Earth Center. The one on Harrison F, I'm not, I believe that service commercial in the inland zone, and I don't know what that potentially is, and Director Kenyon is neighbor. We could get that information back to you guys.
Okay, thank you. It seems to me that many of the buildings that we're doing recently are up to five stories. Is that correct?
That are, well, the linked projects that are under construction are not. They're, they're three.
I guess I'm speaking, like, to the navigation center.
Navigation center went back down to two. Um, the closest to five-story would be the Earth Center. I believe it's at four right now. Um, I don't believe any of, I don't even think that the Weeats, Fifth and D may go to five. I'm, I apologize. I don't know exactly where they're, uh.
Anything further? All right. With that, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing, oh, seeing no one in the chambers. We have Aaron on Zoom. Go ahead, Aaron. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name is Aaron Eckhaus. I'm the Local and Regional Policy Program Director with California YIMBY. Yes, in my backyard. Uh, proud to be the, be co-sponsors of SB seventy-nine, as well as AB six oh nine. Uh, wanted to share our appreciation for Eureka's pro-housing leadership. I know you all have been doing great work at the local level and really appreciate you, uh, supporting efforts at the state level as well to address our housing crisis. We are, uh, you know, you just endorsed AB six oh nine. Thank you. Uh, SB seventy-nine is another bill that works to solve our state housing crisis in a way that advances our environmental goals by supporting transit-oriented development, making sure that when we've invested major public resources in very high-quality transit, uh, rail transit, bus rapid transit, that we have transit-supportive zoning that goes with it, uh, that allows many people to benefit from living near that investment in higher-quality, sustainable mobility. Uh, I think Eureka's support for the bill will help send a message to the legislature that this is a statewide crisis that affects every part of the state, and that we cannot solve our statewide housing crisis unless we are able to address it in every part of the state. So thank you again for your pro-housing leadership, and we will be honored to have your support for SB seventy-nine.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, is there anyone else on Zoom?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for a motion and a second and comments. Councilmember Fernandez?
I'll move, uh, that we authorize the mayor to sign and staff to transmit letter support of AB, or sorry, uh, Senate Bill seventy-nine.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Please vote.
Three yes votes. Councilmember Bauer and Councilmember Contreras Deloche dissent. Motion carries.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone for coming out to this special meeting this evening. Just another Tuesday. With that,
Uh, we are going to set strategic visioning dates.
Okay.
So exciting.
So in a rush to get here, I left my phone at home. I did, but we can schedule something. I think I gave you a, a bunch of dates.
Well, this is beyond, we didn't have dates that last session.
It's fine. We'll schedule.
This is September and October. So in looking, I know that, um, Saturdays work best for the mayor, except you do have an in-service day on Friday the third. I've checked the calendar.
That works for me, then.
Um, October third. I don't know. I, I just wanted to throw that out.
Did you say October third?
October third of Friday. So our facilitator is not available eighteenth through the twenty-third of September, or the eighth through the fifteenth of O- October. So.
Yeah, it was like, how's everybody looking for that October third date?
Yeah, I'm officiating a wedding. I can't do it. It's my niece, too, so.
Okay, so then we move to Saturdays. Um, so we have the twenty-seventh of, of, of September. And, let's see, our league is what?
League, we wouldn't leave until, um, Tuesday, but we'll come back on Friday. Correct. What's that week? Um, the seventh through the tenth.
What are the dates of league?
October, October seventh through the tenth is league this year.
Which our facilitator isn't available. So we would have October fourth, October eighteenth, or the twenty-fifth. And then in September, we would have the sixth, or the thirteenth, or the twenty-seventh.
So I cannot, October eighteenth. We said we can't do that one, right? I can't. It's my daughter's wedding.
She said no.
Okay, good.
What does September twenty-seventh look like for everybody?
I'm gonna say yes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Castellano is a no.
Oh, God.
I was supposed to visit my mom for her birthday on that day. I can, I would rather not change my plans to visit my mom. Cause on September twenty-seventh, we're saying, yeah. I could do the other, uh, weekends in September.
Would you please give us those dates again?
Okay, so that would leave, uh, September sixth or thirteenth.
How's everybody looking for September sixth?
I could do sixth.
Cool.
Everybody's in? September, stop. All right.
We're good?
So we're confirmed for September sixth for strategic visioning. Thank you, everybody, for your flexibility on this matter. And with that,
Can we be done by six o'clock? It's arts alive night. Some of us have to go back to work.
Yes, we can do that.
So we have a date for strategic visioning. That will be September sixth. Times, do you have a?
Do you want to do a second, um, an alternate, just in case? I don't know. So that would October fourth or twenty-fifth.
You either have a vision or you don't.
All right, so let's, let's stay on track here. So where are you at?
Our October fourth or the twenty-fifth? Okay, so not on that.
September thirteenth? Is that also a possibility?
That's a no.
October twenty-fifth?
Or, or September thirteenth?
September thirteenth didn't work for Contreras.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
October twenty-fifth is an alternative. That doesn't work for you. Okay, doesn't work.
Okay.
For twenty-fifth, so.
So the sixth.
September sixth. All right, again, thank you, everybody, for bringing your calendars and being flexible on this matter. With that, we are adjourned.